Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Friday session of the California Coastal Commission. We will begin by calling this meeting to order and asking for a roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Malley.
President.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
She's here but just stepped out. She's back.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Nacente.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present and accounted for.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Chair Harmon.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the virtual meeting procedures, please.
All right. Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have Internet access and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paper lists in the middle are available on the commission's staff table just outside the meeting room, or just inside the meeting room today. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on a regular agenda item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have Internet access, please go to the commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the commission's staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much. And now I will turn to our chief counsel for a report out. Ms. Roy.
Thank you, Chair Harmon, and good morning. At the end of the day yesterday, the commission met and closed session. It received litigation information and advice and took action on the following cases: Benedetti et al. versus County of Marin et al., Bookout versus Coastal Commission, Hadian versus California Coastal Commission, City of Trinidad versus Chirai Ancestral Society et al., and Rhodes versus California Coastal Commission. It also received litigation information and advice on City of Fort Bragg versus Mendocino Railway. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now we will move to agenda changes, please.
Thank you, and good morning, Chair Harmon and commissioners. We have eight changes to the agenda today, all of which are also noted on the Agenda Changes memo posted to the online agenda. First, item 8A has been moved to consent, the CDP application by Chevron for the decommissioning and removal of oil and natural gas pipelines from the beach and seafloor in Carpinteria. Next, item 13A has been postponed for a Monterey County LCP amendment focused on ADUs. Next, item 13B has been moved to consent for a Santa Cruz County LCP amendment focused on ADUs and code updates. Next, item 13C has been moved to consent for a Santa Cruz County LCP amendment focused on updates to their zoning code. Next, item 15B has been postponed for a CDP application involving shoreline armoring seaward of a residence in Pismo Beach. And finally, items 15B, 15C, and 16A have been moved to consent for CDP applications or amendments for the restacking of shoreline revetment boulders seaward of residences in Santa Cruz County. This concludes the changes to today's agenda, and that brings us to item four, general public comment. With that, I'll turn the mic back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Teufel. Okay, so, Chris? I'll turn it to you. Thank you.
Okay. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes during general public comment at the discretion of the chair. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I'll call your names in the order that they appear on our sign-up list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and introduce yourself when you approach to speak. There is a raise-your-hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing *6. So it looks like today, we have a total of 22, 23 speakers. We'll start with the people in the room. We have, it looks like nine in person. We have Mitch Silverstein, Mary Glanville, and Hannah Lee Bull to start. So Mitch.
Mitch Silverstein, California Policy Senior Coordinator for Surf Rider Foundation. You know, yesterday, while the gentleman from LA was presenting about the Venice sewage pump plant, he had mentioned that like the worst-case scenario there would be only a little bit worse than what's happening every day down in South Bay, San Diego, in the Tijuana River Valley, and affecting Imperial Beach and South San Diego. And it made me realize I hadn't heard for a while at the Coastal Commission one of the regular informational updates on transboundary pollution crisis in the Tijuana River and Tijuana River Valley, which was happening pretty regularly, I think, most of last year or even up to earlier this year. So I just wanted to highlight that and see where the commission was on that and see if that was something that was still going to be regularly updated, especially since in December. You'll be back in Imperial Beach, and I'm sure the community there would love to hear your, or is going to bring that to you. So yeah, hopefully, I'm hoping that we'll see that again. And then, since I'm up here, I wanted to just mention a couple of recent developments that I can quickly share. Two weeks ago, UC San Diego and SDSU published an air quality study in the peer-reviewed journal Science, and their study revealed that frontline communities are exposed to dangerous levels of hydrogen sulfide gas, with the levels down there in the pollution hotspots peaking out at 4,500 parts per billion. For comparison, 7.5 parts per billion is the chronic exposure limit set by the state of California. So that really confirmed what communities down there already know, that they're suffering health impacts from the air quality from the sewage. Also, the EPA has showed a real interest in accelerating solutions. They announced intentions to speed up the IBWC's incremental 10 million gallons per day expansion of the International Treatment Plant by the end of last month, but I haven't heard anything concrete on whether they've completed that job yet. And then, I'm out of time, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Glanville, Hannah Lee Bull, and then Marcy Snyder.
Hello. Can you hear me? I'm Mary Glanville of the Fort Bragg Headlands Consortium, and I'll be talking about mill pond removal on the Fort Bragg headlands. The mill pond specifically is a symbol of the environmental damage caused by historic industry, disrupting natural hydrology, altering habitat, and degrading the health of the surrounding coastal ecosystem. Now, with the Skunk Train owning this land, there's a rare opportunity to do something truly meaningful, to repair the damage, restore the natural function of the landscape, and set an example for responsible land stewardship. In addition, it would open up the beach and lowlands to public access. This is a vital access point to the ocean. This isn't just an environmental cleanup, it's a chance to demonstrate what can happen when private landowners, communities, and agencies come together with a shared vision for ecological healing. Georgia Pacific, the previous landowner, only put one option on the table for pond removal, shipping it all to Kettelman City. This is a flimsy straw man that is easily dismissed. As John Gallo wrote in a letter to Cesira Railroad and CC Coastal Commission staff Melissa Kramer on February 28th, and discussed on Wednesday, "There are many new scientific and technological approaches for cleanup, such that only a small portion of the sediment needs to be shipped to Kettelman City." We will update that letter and send it to all of you, too. The Skunk Train has a chance to be a leader, not just in tourism, but in showing how past damage can be acknowledged and repaired for the benefit of future generations. I urge the Coastal Commission to support full ecological restoration of the mill pond site and encourage the Skunk Train to step into this opportunity for real environmental leadership. I respectfully ask that the Coastal Commission asks DTSC to add this common sense alternative to the list of alternatives to be studied in the feasibility study and the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Hannah Lee Bull, Marcy Snyder, Vincent Poterica.
My name is Hannah Lee Bull. I'm a resident of Fort Bragg and a healthcare provider in this area.
Sorry to interrupt. Can you please put the mic down so we can hear you better?
Okay. Did you get who I am? On Wednesday, I gave public comment on taking precautionary measures to mitigate health risks on future development and industrial enterprises in Fort Bragg. Today, I want to speak more to the housing plans for the former mill site, having participated in Wednesday's tour, which was slanted towards the Mendocino Railway. For health risk reasons, I'm opposed to building housing on the Neioe headlands. Friends and associates have told me they would not consider the headlands for housing, mostly because of the toxic contamination presented by the mill ponds. Potentially, the toxicity can migrate through the soil to other areas. Disruption to the earth through large building equipment could further reveal more toxic contamination. The thought of children playing in the stirred-up dirt near the new housing gives me cause for concern for their health. It makes more sense to place new housing on the empty lots around town rather than on the Neioe headlands already polluted by the mill site. Additionally, the current federal administration actively promotes fossil fuel extraction and use. Therefore, we are likely to be more prone to toxicity due to climate change factors for the foreseeable future. The increased humidity and lack of sun this summer created conditions of toxicity in our own existing homes. When we combine health risks regarding climate change toxicity with the existing toxic contamination on the mill site, the health of humans occupying new housing on the mill site may be put in significant jeopardy. Too many unknowns exist to reasonably move forward with housing development and also ensure the health and well-being of life on the Neioe headlands. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Snyder, Vincent Poterica, Peter McNamara.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. My name is Marcy Snyder. I'm a resident of Fort Bragg. I'm a retiree. My main point here today is that the citizens of Fort Bragg have been left out of the decision-making process. We've been making comments to the city for about 20 years on the development, or not development, and restoration and remediation of the mill site, and for the most part, the plans remain the same. The public decision-making is currently being made behind closed doors. It's not public. And Mendocino Railroad is just another one of our roadside attractions. It is not an interstate railroad. It can't go anywhere. There have been three meetings that have been said that we've had an opportunity to comment. The first one was on October 15th, where buried in the agenda under item 8A was a change in the housing element. People didn't know about it. The second meeting, hundreds of people showed up. There were beautiful, colorful maps on the walls of this room, just covering them like wallpaper. We were given sticky tags to make comments. Many people commented remediation first, no extensive train tracks next to the ocean or anywhere, no railroad station, no extensive development, and daylighting of the creeks and redeveloping the estuary that was originally there. Then on June 26, the MOU was introduced to the public in the Big Cotton Auditorium on the east side of town, where the workshop, they called it, aims to initiate MOU. There were more big colorful maps with train tracks, train stations. We have been left out of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Vincent Poterica, Peter McNamara, and Steve Ray.
Hey, good morning, commissioners and staff. I am Vincent Poterica. I'm a Fort Bragg resident since January of 2021. I'm a public employee at Mendocino College. I'm the father of two wonderful kids who are in first and third grades, and I'm also a local property owner who plans to live in this lovely community that we're grateful that you all are visiting for the long term. All I want to share is that whatever happens with the Fort Bragg headlands, the old mill site, I urge strongly the commission to recommend cleaning up all the remaining toxic substances to the absolute maximum standard and to please require whoever leads and funds the cleanup to be very clear about what standard is being used for the remediation. That's all I got. Thanks very much for giving me the time to voice this comment, and I apologize that I was unable to make it yesterday. It's just tough to be working and parenting to make these. So thank you. I got to go now. Bye.
Thank you. Sorry for mispronouncing your last name. Next, Peter McNamara, Steve Ray, and then we'll move to our Zoom speakers.
Good morning, Peter McNamara. I just wanted to come in this morning and say goodbye. I want to say, you know, for those of us who live here in this paradise, we understand that it's a little bit difficult to get here, and we really appreciate the fact that all of you have come here along with the Coastal Commission staff. We wouldn't live in paradise if it wasn't for the work of the Coastal Commission since the 1970s. So your work is the wall that keeps places like this incredibly beautiful. And you're not alone, by the way, in being in awe. Over 2 million Californians come to Mendocino. We have a population of 90,000 in this county, and 2 million Californians come to appreciate the same beauty and serenity that we hope you experienced during your visit here. We really hope that you will continue to come back, because there are so many things that you didn't see in your three-day tour here. There are so many different tours that you could be taking on that we think make the case for why this place needs to be conserved and why it needs to be retained, why we choose to live here. And I just want you to know that our Paradise knob for the Coastal Commission will always be turned to 11 at the Golden West. Have a good day.
Thank you. Steve Ray, and then our first Zoom speakers will be Stephen Dennis, Christina Coggins, and then Melan Ali.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners, staff, and members of the public. I'm Steve Ray. It's great to be here in Morro Bay, isn't it? It's not only the scenery, not only the great food and vibes here and everything, it's mostly the people. You just saw a couple of them, Peter and Marcy here, and of course, Donna Brownsey, the former commission chair who lives here. I come here for the people, frankly, and when I come here, I usually either come up Highway 1 or come down Highway 1, depending on which direction I'm heading, or come up to 101 and cut across on 128 to get here and go through three redwood forests on the way. It's exciting just getting here. And speaking of exciting, when my wife and I arrived the other night, Tuesday night, we came up to Willets and brought Highway 20 across, and that's a very exciting road. It's very scenic, it's beautiful and all that, but it's known as challenging. And as a matter of fact, right across the street, right through that wall there, there is a store that sells shirts that said, "I Survived Highway 20." And if you've driven it, you understand what it means. But when we came, it was dark, it was foggy and raining all the way. And so I told the people in the store, if you have a shirt that says, "I Survived Highway 20," with the dark, with the rain, and with the fog, I'll buy a dozen of them. Anyway, it's so great to come to these small towns along the coast, because the people here are so genuine and they have real issues. And so I want to invite you to another town, Morro Bay. You came recent, or last year, and we want to invite you back this coming year. In April and August, there will be hearings in the central coast, and we would like to help you arrange to have another visit to Morro Bay, because like this town, Morro Bay has a lot of great people and a lot of big issues coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now moving to our Zoom speakers, Stephen Dennis, followed by Christina Coggins and Melan Ali.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. My name is Steve Dennis, and I was a resident of Carmel Highlands for almost 30 years. I lived just a few miles from Point Lobos and drove past the reserve on Highway 1 almost every day. This should be a peaceful and beautiful commute along our iconic coast. Instead, it's become a corridor of stress, unpredictability, and danger. Every day, I've driven Highway 1 outside of Point Lobos, and I've witnessed hazardous conditions, cars pulling onto the very narrow shoulder in a disorganized scramble for space, often without fully clearing the roadway. Drivers backing into traffic with no visibility, making U-turns, and suddenly stopping, unsure what to do when they're looking for parking. The road was never built to accommodate the level of spontaneous parking or foot traffic. Hordes of visitors are walking along the highway, children, seniors, families, some of them pushing strollers, just inching from fast-moving traffic with nothing to protect them. There's no designated walking pass and no enforcement or signage. As a local, it's heartbreaking and frustrating to see what is now a constant public safety risk, and navigating it is stressful, risky, and dangerous. I've been on the steering committee member of Parkit, founded by the late Ernest Chung, who was the past chair of the California State Parks Commission. Parkit is a well-thought-out plan for immediate change, a reservation-based access system with shuttle service that provides safety for the visitors and drivers while also preserving the environment that we value. Parkit is currently in the permitting process with the county and has been reviewed by the Coastal Commission staff. I hope you'll support this as something we can do to make a difference. Thank you for your leadership and for hearing me today.
Thank you. Next, Christina Coggins, Melan Ali, and then Bruce Reitherman. Christina Coggins, and we have your presentation.
Good morning, commissioners. Slide one, please. My name is Christina Coggins, and I'm here today to respectfully urge you to reconsider your approval of the proposed development at 501 Sandpoint Road in Carpinteria. It sits directly adjacent to the Carpinteria Salt Marsh. This isn't just any parcel of land. It borders one of the most ecologically sensitive wetlands on the California coast. The Carpinteria Salt Marsh is a rare and fragile habitat that supports over 200 species of birds, fish, and native plants, some of which are threatened or endangered. It also serves as a critical buffer against sea level rise and coastal flooding. The development you approved risks irreversibly damaging this ecosystem. Construction will disrupt wildlife corridors, increase runoff and pollution, and alter hydrological flows in the marsh, all at a time when climate resilience should be our top priority. No matter how well-intentioned or designed, building in such close proximity to this habitat sends the wrong message, that private development can take precedence over coastal environmental protection. Slide two, please. Your mission as a commission is to protect California's coast for the benefit of all, not just the few. Reversing this decision would affirm your commitment to that mission and set a precedent that ecological integrity outweighs short-sighted developmental interests. I urge you to stand with the science, the community, and the generations who will inherit this coast. Please reverse the approval for 501 Sandpoint Road and protect the Carpinteria Salt Marsh while we stick to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Melan Ali, Bruce Reitherman, and then Gary Hedrick. Melan Ali.
Good morning. My name is Melan Ali, and I live in south-central Los Angeles. I am Black, non-binary, queer, unemployed, and not from a place that has had coastal access. My barriers to accessing the ocean safely are vast. Last month, I had the opportunity to attend a queer surf camp at Imperial Beach in San Diego. The weekend included surfing, snorkeling, and skating in community with folks spanning race, class, gender, and sexuality. One of my favorite queer surf slogans is "All Bodies, All Boards." This statement was fully embodied at the San Diego camp. In many ways, barriers to accessing the coast were greatly reduced or eliminated that weekend. I was able to attend the camp due to a generous BIPOC scholarship, which reduced financial barriers. I was able to access transportation to and from camp, eliminating transportation barriers. I was able to room with other BIPOC folks and receive surf lessons from a Black instructor, which was safe and affirming, reducing racial barriers. I was given every piece of equipment that I would need to be safe in the water, and there were daily water checks for water quality, removing safety barriers. My gender and sexuality were affirmed and celebrated, which removed homophobic and transphobic barriers. All skill levels were welcome, which removed barriers around needing previous skill or knowledge to be in the ocean. And my absolute favorite part of the weekend was catching the last wave of the last day and finally being able to stand up on the board. That moment was largely in part to three queer surf instructors, Kai, LaZelle, and Jody, who gave me body-specific modifications and affirmations all weekend in the water. I felt safe, confident, and joyful enough to try something new and scary in the ocean. The feeling was euphoric. I don't get to have these moments often in my day-to-day life, and I appreciated that level of joy and clarity. Course surf has never failed to create environments where those moments are plentiful and available to all bodies on all boards. I hope you continue to fund this organization. Thank you.
And thank you. Next is Bruce Reitherman, Gary Hedrick, and then Peter Kaz. Bruce Reitherman.
Hello, and thank you all for this opportunity to speak about my concerns that the proposed residence at 501 Sandpoint Road has been approved without adequate environmental review. My name is Bruce Reitherman. I've been a resident of Summerland, a community near the Carpinteria Salt Marsh for 36 years, during which time I've been a county-approved biological consultant and conservation director and retired of Land Trust for Santa Barbara County. I speak today as a concerned citizen. The Carpinteria Marsh habitat is precious and valuable. About that, I think there's very little controversy. Whether it is vulnerable to the significant impacts likely to be caused by the project is the critical question, and it's one that has an important spatial element relative to birds I would like to present to you today. Previously described patterns of bird utilization of the marsh by ocean-loving species, beach-combing shorebirds, and abundance of songbirds, including a subspecies, the building Sauvannesperre, listed by the state as endangered, and a variety of raptors, all provide a useful lens through which to consider the potential for significant harm to the marsh's avian inhabitants. Slide one, as you see here, shows an oblique view of the entire marsh with the location of the project indicated in red. Slide two, please. Closer view, slide three, please. Shows a closer vertical view now with a rough approximation of the project site surrounded by a red circle, one with an arbitrary radius of 500 feet. one with an arbitrary radius of 500 feet as this area appears during a moderately high tide. Slide four, please. Shows the same view during a low tide, exposing the sandbar habitat where birds are often especially active. Slide five, please. Shows the same area now from a higher perspective that takes in the entire marsh. And slide six, please. Now with an overlay of a heat map of bird activity presented to you previously by Dr. Andrew Brooks. These figures suggest to me that there's a high potential for negative impacts. I believe it requires further review, and I don't believe that standard is yet to meet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Gary Hedrick, Peter Kaz, and Dr. Andrew Brooks. Gary Hedrick.
Good morning, Coastal Commission. Gary Hedrick with San Clemente Green. And I'm glad to see everyone in Fort Bragg. I miss that place. It's beautiful and hope you're all doing well. I'm just calling from the San Jose region, and I've been informing the Coastal Commission for several meetings now about the condition of nuclear waste containers that have been damaged. And we have photos that I shared with you. And I don't have a presentation for you today, but I do want to just share some quick update and then move on because we've, so far, the pressure that we've asserted to Edison through, in the last six weeks, there's been six important articles written about this issue. Edison has agreed to consider sharing all the photographs of the damaged canisters. They have a plan to share information about the canisters on October 16th. And we want to be sure we get the photos before then so we understand what they're going to tell us about the conditions. We want to see it for ourselves first. And visual inspection should have photos to accompany it. So the main thing I want to share, I just got an email from Congressman Mike Levin this morning. I want to share it with you. He just said, well, his deputy chief of staff said, "Hey, Gary, I talked to Congressman Levin about this, and he agrees that Edison needs to be transparent in all regards, especially the results and information on inspection of canisters." So, you know, that's one more voice speaking loudly to have the photos. We'd like the Coastal Commission to schedule a special workshop, hopefully before Edison does, but let's see the photos, please. We're all clamoring for it, and you have the power. So please get the photos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Peter Kaz, followed by Dr. Andrew Brooks and Anne Stenton. Peter Kaz.
Good day, commissioners and staff. My name is Peter Kaz. Newport Beach's local coastal program, certified by this body, specifically seeks to, and I quote, "continue to provide shore mooring and offshore mooring as an important source of low-cost public access to the water and harbor." Close quote. This is accomplished through the permit system, wherein the risk and expense is borne by the permit holder and where the mooring equipment is owned and maintained by the state. You and state land have seen and heard over many months how the city plans to implement a wholesale change in the permit system, but only for mooring permits, taking over the personal property mooring tackles and the associated risk and expense, which are not significant. The city would like you to believe that the mooring permits convey some sort of real property interest, but they are not deeds or title to a land, any kind of land submerged or otherwise. This is clearly stated various places within the code. Permits simply allowed for the payment of rent and fees for the temporary occupation of estate land. The city would have those fees to go more than 1,300% higher than the current estate land commission bench rates. Mooring permits simply transfer the mooring tackles and the permission to use it. Permits holders had no choice but to follow mandated government policy, which is in place. Please do not penalize whistleblower who pointed out that the city has been gifting the estate land on their docks for over decades. Please do not allow the city to take away our coastal access through the ongoing use of misinformation and false narratives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Andrew Brooks, followed by Anne Stenton and then Anne Marie Wyble. Dr. Andrew Brooks.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Andrew Brooks, and I am the director of the University of California's Carpinteria Salt Marsh Reserve. I'd like to speak today to encourage the commission to reconsider their decision to permit the construction of a single-family home at 501 Sandpoint Road in Carpinteria, immediately adjacent to the Carpinteria Salt Marsh. While I have many concerns about the expected impacts of this project, one of my foremost concerns is impacts to shorebirds. Shorebird populations are declining rapidly along California's coastline, and the Carpinteria Salt Marsh provides vital shorebird habitat. Next slide, please. Here you can see a heat map showing the density of birds observed in the Carpinteria Salt Marsh. This map was, this figure was shown previously by Bruce Reitherman. I'll give you a little more details. The data were collected by weekly observations of birds in the Carpinteria Salt Marsh in 2024. Higher density of birds are shown on the map in yellow or white. As you can see, the greatest number of birds are seen on or adjacent to the proposed project. This includes several species listed as endangered or threatened, including the western snowy plover and lease churn, as well as many other species protected by the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act. I urge the commission to reconsider allowing this project to proceed. Please act to conserve California's coastal resources, not aid in their development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anne Stenton, Anne Marie Wyble, and then Diana Sandoval. Anne Stenton.
Good morning. Thank you, and thank you for pulling up my slides. Good morning, commissioners and staff. My name is Anne Stenton. I'm a mooring holder and president of the Newport Mooring Association. Thank you for your time today and your interest in better understanding the coastal access issues tied to Newport Harbor's new mooring license program. I respectfully urge this commission require the city's mooring license program to undergo a coastal development permit review. On August 21st, the Lieutenant Governor, in her role as Chair of the State Lands Commission, said that setting rates is up to the city. It's not state lands. And up until now, we've heard staff say that jurisdiction between coastal and state lands was still being kind of sussed out. But from Peter Douglas's 1993 memo here, it seems that CDPs are required when imposing or increasing fees, including for parking lots, boats, boat launching, piers, et cetera. And that seems to establish coastal's oversight of rates. The city, as you've heard, is proposing rate increases of 300% to 500%, along with changes that reduce access, such as replacing the longstanding system where mooring tackle is owned and maintained by mooring permit holders with high-cost, city-owned, short-term moorings. This change risks turning what has been nearly 100 years of affordable access into something inaccessible for our community. For decades, the current system has enabled school teachers like myself, as well as mechanics, lifeguards, fishermen, missionaries, retirees, and others to keep boating accessible in Southern California. Next slide, please. The second slide shows a more recent instance of this commission seeking review of future local rate increases. I'm grateful that the Coastal Commission requires coastal access remain within reach for working families like mine. I respectfully ask that the commission require the city to obtain a coastal development permit so these major changes receive the full review and public input that they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Anne Marie Wyble, Diana Sandoval, and Julie Bauer. Anne Marie Wyble. Anne Marie, you're still muted. There you go.
Okay. Good morning, Anne Marie Wyble. I'm respectfully asking for increased transparency from the Skunk Train Plan and Maps regarding the development of plans and maps. There's a lack of publicly available maps showing what development the Skunk Train plans for the Fort Bragg Headlands. This lack of clarity creates confusion for the public, local agencies, and community groups, and raises concerns about compliance with Coastal Act policies, especially around public access and environmental protection. Accurate, accessible maps are essential for the public to understand what's being proposed on the land and to engage meaningfully in any planning or oversight processes. Transparency builds trust and ensures accountability. I believe that the Skunk Train, as a private operator with a public-facing presence, should be held to that standard. I respectfully urge the Skunk Train to make their maps and development plans publicly available, especially for any areas that may impact public access or the coastal environment. On the tour, I noticed a healthy, big, beautiful buck, and it's nice to see that since the logging stopped and remediation happened, some remediation, that the nature can recuperate to some degree. I am concerned that the community's input has not been included enough. And so I'm really hoping that you stay in touch with what's happening here on the ground. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Diana Sandoval, Julie Bauer, and then Adam Leverens. Diana Sandoval.
Good morning, commissioners. I am Diana Sandoval, and this is my 10th time discussing the blocked public equestrian hiking trail at 3215 Foothill Road, Carpinteria. To recap, a private polo field was built in an environmentally sensitive habitat area, and a hiking and equestrian trail was promised. The polo field was built and is used, but the public trail, which should be accessible to the public, has gone unrecorded and blocked for years. Santa Barbara County has known about this violation for years, including the last 16 months, and the commission has known for 15 months. Yet, nothing has changed. The public trail remains unrecorded and blocked. The 15-foot-wide public equestrian hiking trail easement was required to be recorded prior to land use clearance. Yet, this condition was not met, but the permits were unlawfully issued, violating the Coastal Act and the permit conditions set forth in several CDPs. Slide, please. Since the trail has gone unrecorded, the commission has the opportunity to require the county to immediately open a southern entrance via Serapola Drive, a public street which we see here. This would allow immediate public-to-public access once recorded. Slide, please. Santa Barbara County is using a one-foot buffer, again, one foot, at Serapola Drive, which the same property owner owns as the excuse to deny this southern entrance. As we see in the grant deed, the one-foot buffer is part of the same deed and should not be used as an excuse. Santa Barbara County has a documented pattern of unlawfully exempting this property from permit requirements and the Coastal Act. Santa Barbara County allowed the construction of a new vehicular bridge and road in an Esha, the installation of a hazardous gas line across the creek, and even the placement of a new gas meter directly within the Esha. Therefore, I urge enforcement staff and you commissioners to uphold the Coastal Act and ensure that the polo trail is promptly recorded and immediately opened to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Julie Bauer, Adam Leverens, and then I'll start calling names that we haven't been able to find. So Julie Bauer.
My name is Julie Bauer from Walala, and I'm reading a letter from my father-in-law, John Bauer, who has lived in Walala his whole life. He owns about 50% of the property affected by the Walala Streetscape Project. His letter reads, "My concerns about the loss of the existing parallel on-street parking in our Streetscape Project have been summarily dismissed for decades. Imagine if fire engines and ambulances, trucks with trailers like fishermen, tree servicers, contractors, utilities, if they can't park, then they can't spend money in our grocery stores, peach shop, restaurant, galleries, or even go to the post office, and tourists with big RVs and travel trailers. You know that everyone in Walala relies on tourism dollars. None of the parking lots downtown have turnaround space for these vehicles. Do we really want to prevent people from supporting our local businesses? Everyone here depends on our existing on-street parking. My family has had numerous conversations with Caltrans, who is responsible for the Streetscape Project, and we're told that we're losing this parking because of the Coastal Commission's requirement that there be no on-street parking along Highway One throughout the state. But the Coastal Commission hasn't required that anywhere else. Point Arena has on-street parking for its Main Street businesses, so why not in Walala? Why is the Coastal Commission discriminating against Walala businesses this way? Without on-street parking, our businesses will suffer greatly, and it will be the Coastal Commission's fault. My commercial tenants don't own the land or buildings they occupy, but Caltrans and the Coastal Commission have not approached them to be a part of the conversation about this negative financial impact that they will suffer from the theft of their customers' parking. The Coastal Commission's demand for the removal of on-street parking is likely going to make the town less safe and less inviting because these types of vehicles are going to double-park or attempt to park unsafely in our small, private lots. I don't have time to read your mission statement, but you do, and you're failing to live up to the mission statement with the Walala Streetscape Project. The Coastal Commission needs to converse with the people of Walala and Caltrans to come up with a better solution. Thank you."
Thank you. Adam Leverens.
Good morning. Is my audio coming through?
Yes, we can hear you great.
Okay, thank you. At meetings over the past several months, after general public comment, I've heard from a commissioner in response, ranges of figures that they've stated are sourced from Google. The first time this occurred, even though the figures were inaccurate given the locality that was being discussed, I appreciated the initiative of someone having the interest to look up things during the meeting. Yesterday, however, the high-end figure was more than $800,000 off for the locality in question. And I myself was shocked to learn that everything you find on the internet isn't true or accurate. And I would encourage that real facts be used. There is factual data available, and it's not always popping up on Google searches. And the issues are so incredibly important that soundbites or something read through a quick search really isn't appropriate. And I'm just hoping that due diligence is exercised on some of these very critical issues. And again, thank you so much for all you folks do.
Thank you. And we did have two more signups that we're unable to find in the Zoom list. Jim Holtz and Chris Bliss. If you're in the meeting, please raise your hand. Again, Jim Holtz and Chris Bliss. I see one person with their hand raised under the name Hermosa Beach Property Owner. You should be able to unmute. Please state your name.
My name is Jim Holtz. Sorry, I'm trying to change my name on the settings.
Go ahead.
Could you pull up my, could you pull up? There you go. Good morning, commissioners. In December 2023, the commission held a discussion for affordable housing in the coastal zone. Professor Wasma was on the panel, and he presented research from the Los Angeles area. His work was commissioned by Better Neighbors L.A., who is owned by United Eleven, a hotel employee union that campaigns to eliminate short-term rentals to benefit the hotel industry. Unsurprisingly, he framed STRs as the major driver of rent increases, unit loss, and nightly homelessness. Many commissioners at the time praised his comments after he spoke. Later, your staff looked into the urban findings, translate to the coast, and concluded they do not map cleanly to the coastal communities. They also cautioned that cutting STRs does not by itself produce affordable housing. Let's see how this alliance was the New York Short-Term Rental Ban. A few years ago, the city residents reported at nearly 40,000 Airbnb listings as a reason for high rental rates. New York responded with Local Law 11 that effectively ended most STRs and most vanished from Airbnb overnight. As you can see here, after two years, no improvement in the housing supply, rents near record highs and very low vacancy. Google this for more details. The takeaway is simple. Blaming STRs for housing shortages is not the solution. New York results and you own staff cautions point the same way. I get it. The commission wants affordable housing in the coastal zone. Reducing or restricting STRs alone does not create affordable housing, and much of the coastal zone is already beyond the average household price range. As our coastal commissions, cities extend inland, have you considered building affordable houses a bit further away where it's cheaper? Thank you.
Thank you. And I am not seeing Chris Bliss on Zoom. No more hands raised. Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Great, thank you very much, and many thanks to the public for sharing your testimony with us. So before I bring it back to my colleagues, I just want to remind all of us that the purpose of our conversation following public comment is really just to determine if we want to put an item on an agenda, not to have an extended discussion about any specific topic. So with that, are there any colleagues that, okay, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. Just want to kind of call out the tension, the comments made by Mitch from Surf Rider about the updates from Tijuana story. Obviously, being a resident of something in San Diego, I'm also interested, and I understand now Supervisor Aguirre is on, is still on the case of getting this thing solved, but I, you know, maybe with not the same frequency, but I think at least at December or prior to December, it would be really nice to have an update since we'll be down there anyway. So thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
I just had a question for staff regarding some of the comments about the Department of Toxic Substance Control and the alternative options that would be potentially studied, whether that's in the feasibility study or in an EIR, and the discussion about the remediation standards. And I'm wondering if we could get a better understanding, maybe at a later date, about what the Commission's role in consultation would be at this time or going forward as DTSC and the parties in this project at the Noyo Headlands are looking at environmental review and remediation. Thanks.
Through the chair, just a quick response. Thanks, Commissioner Kelly. I think we can work on getting some type of a briefing or something from DTSC, or at least through us, but, you know, with information from DTSC to answer your questions.
Commissioner Nada.
Yes, thank you. I wanted, I too wanted to thank Surf Rider for reminding us that regular updates on what's happening in Tijuana Rivers would be really great to get back in the habit of and also be actively engaged. But I also, I've raised the issue before, and I was glad to hear from Mr. Dennis in the public comments about just my concern about the safety at Point Lobos and the state park there. And yesterday, when the representative of the local state parks was here and celebrating the collaboration between state parks and Caltrans on solving some solutions here on the North Coast, it made my heart sing to think, okay, good, state parks and Caltrans are working on that so that hopefully they will carry that collaboration to the Point Lobo situation, because it is a very dangerous situation with the cars parking and families walking along Highway 1 with cars speeding by at 50, 60 miles an hour. So I know that there are, that there's some proposals that are going to be working their way through the county of Monterey, and, but there's also some other things that I think we could, and I'm very glad that Mr. Carl from the Central Coast Office has been communicating with the county and with concerned citizens there, and I just want to encourage that and see if we can really get some action sooner rather than later.
Through the chair, just wanted to thank you for those comments, Commissioner Nada, and just to confirm that I think the very thing you're talking about, that sort of collaboration, facilitation of a discussion between parks and Caltrans and coastal is exactly what's going on right now. So, and we are aware, and it's going, we're talking with the county, so I would expect, I don't know what the timeline is exactly for this to come in front of you, but we are actively working towards solutions on this one.
Can't come soon enough.
Commissioner Lopez.
I'll just jump in there as well and say that I support that conversation happening sooner rather than later, knowing that the project, as we put in place at the county of Monterey, was a pilot. So as it comes forward, I think that that needs to come to an end, and we have to have a long-term solution, and so look forward to the collaboration that's necessary to get us there, especially while maintaining the access, but look forward to that conversation. Thank you.
Commissioner Preciado.
Yes, I just wanted to comment, hearing San Diego County, there is significant developments occurring about the challenges and tragedy that's underway, that has been underway for over 40 years in the Imperial Beach Coast and the communities of San Isidro and Nestor. And so the development, I look forward to hearing if there is any federal updates or any state updates as well. But you should please know that in San Diego County, there is extensive reporting. All the media outlets create updates, provide updates, and so I appreciate the community's interest in Imperial Beach and the water quality that continues to impact Southern California's most beautiful beach, in my view, but certainly one of the most contaminated. And we need to figure out, as we plan for our Imperial Beach meeting in December, what kind of engagement we want to have there. Certainly, one of the things that I'm concerned about is if, if it is as contaminated as it is, I wouldn't want anyone to be doing tours or being close, going in the proximity of the area. And so I look forward to talking to staff about what we will do or what we'll be engaged in when we visit the Imperial Beach, when we have our meeting in Imperial Beach. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. Wonderful, thank you very much, and thank you again to the public, oh, yes, go ahead.
I apologize, through the chair, just wanted to do one quick clarification that just that came out of public comment. We've heard a couple of public comments related to 501 Sandpoint Road, and that was a project, if many of you remember, we approved, it was a takings approval that was done, I think, in May, and several folks have come and requested that the Commission reconsider that decision. I want to clarify the process here. Reconsideration is a process that can be requested by the applicant within 30 days of authorization by the Commission. It's not a process that the Commission, Commissioners or the public, that's, they can't make that type of a request. I also wanted to note, we are in active litigation on this particular development, so there may be more later, but just want to clarify, that's not the appropriate process for us to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Chair. The next item, item five, is the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today, excuse me. We do not have any items agendized on the consent calendar today, so we can move to item six. Item six is the items moved from the regular to the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes earlier this morning, there are six items that staff recommends be moved to the consent calendar, and those are: Item 8A, a CDP application by Chevron for the decommissioning and removal of oil and natural gas pipelines from the beach and seafloor in Carpinteria, Santa Barbara County. Item 13B, a Santa Cruz County LCP amendment focused on ADUs and code updates. Item 13C, a Santa Cruz County LCP amendment focused on updates to the zoning code. And finally, items 15B, 15C, and 16A, CDP applications or amendments for the restacking of shoreline revetment boulders, seaward of residences in Santa Cruz County. I'd like to note that we received correspondence from one commenter objecting to item 13B, the City of Santa Cruz's proposed updates to its LCP ADU regulations. The commenter doesn't raise a specific concern regarding the amendment's proposed language, but rather takes issue more broadly about whether ADUs are appropriate at all in the city, given water, traffic, and other concerns, and questions whether a de minimis LCP amendment process is appropriate. In response, staff notes that the LCP already allows ADUs in the city's coastal zone, and that this amendment simply makes some relatively minor changes to reflect updates to state housing law, and these changes have been reviewed and approved by HCD. In addition, the city has approved numerous ADU CDPs over the years, and we haven't seen any sort of significant adverse coastal resource harm. And for any subsequent proposals, the LCP's coastal resource protection framework can appropriately address any potential issues. So in short, we continue to believe that de minimis processing is appropriate, and that the LCP amendment will continue to be appropriately protective of coastal resources when ADUs are considered, and we continue to recommend that the LCP amendment be approved on the consent calendar. I would also note that we received correspondence from the Surf Rider Foundation on item 15B, the Walsh Revetment Restack in Santa Cruz County. While they generally support the staff recommendation to approve the CDP, they suggested including additional provisions addressing public trust resources and mean high-tide line monitoring. We prepared an addendum that responds to their suggestions and made some changes to our conditions to include our typical public trust requirements, which were inadvertently omitted. So we thank Surf Rider for their comments and continue to recommend you approve the CDP on the consent calendar. Staff is not aware of any further opposition, but the project's moved to the consent calendar, and the applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendations. We're therefore recommending that the Commission vote and approve this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Teufel. Are there any expartees? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on any of these items?
Yes, we have Mitch Silverstein here in person, who wishes to speak on item 15B, move to consent.
All right, Mitch Silverstein, California Senior Policy Coordinator for Surf Rider Foundation. So yeah, I really appreciate working with Central Coast staff on some of the suggestions that we had, and I wanted to just highlight them to all of you, the Commissioners, and to go over them really quick. So next slide. So this was, you know, I commented on one of these revetment restacks, but there were three of them, and we all know Surf Rider opposes shoreline armoring, but these were actually good developments, because it was basically homeowners restacking their boulders where they're supposed to be, where they're permitted to be, because they've been strewn all across the beach. So that's a good thing. One thing I wanted that I felt was a standout detail that I haven't seen, I'm sure it's out there, but I haven't seen it across all districts that have these kind of CDPs, was that the Central Coast staff included revetment, redevelopment status as a special condition that the applicant had to agree to. So in this case, it was only 5% redeveloped, and other two is 15% and 16% redeveloped, and that's a really meaningful detail for the applicant, for the Coastal Commission, and for the public to know where that shoreline protective device stands relative to this 50% redevelopment threshold, when they would require a completely new CDP for the structure. And that would kind of, you know, in our mind, allow the Commission to impose better mitigation or better standards on the negative effects of that structure. Next slide. So yeah, we'd love to see standardization, standardize the addition of redevelopment status in CDPs that involve redevelopment of existing structures, especially shoreline protected devices or houses on the beach. And the next slide. The, this one in particular, the revetment, you can see it's very on, you know, it's basically that you could make the argument that the bottom rocks there, whether they are mossy, are already encroaching on public tidelands. So another recommendation I had was to add in the, within the regular monitoring of the revetment that the applicant needs to have, is that they add a condition to do an MHTL survey. That way, it gives the Commission better knowledge on where, if it's encroaching, and then if it is encroaching, state lands, if they would choose, could have them pay rent for imposing on public tidelands. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers, just those available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I will bring it back to the Commission. Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item? No, okay. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
And I'll second, but I did want to just highlight that I had, I had pulled out that recommendation about redevelopment status as a standard set of analysis. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Kelly, a second by Commissioner Nada. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nada?
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Abstain.
Turnbull Sanders abstains. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is nine yes with one abstention.
Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. Okay, now we'll move to item seven, the Energy, Ocean Resources, and Federal Consistency Report. Please, Mr. Teufel.
Thank you, Chair. As you said, item seven is the Deputy Director's Report for Energy, Ocean Resources, and Federal Consistency Division. We have one waiver and one immaterial amendment for the Commission's consideration, along with two negative determinations to report. I don't believe there are any speakers signed up today, and would therefore ask whether three or more Commissioners object to the waiver or immaterial amendment in the Deputy Director's Report.
Thank you. Any expartees? And Chris confirming there are no speakers signed up?
No speakers, three available for questions.
Awesome. Do three or more Commissioners object to any item in the Deputy Director's Report? Seeing no objections, the Commission concur. Thank you. Now, I guess we're at 9A.
That's correct. Thank you, Chair. 9A is a consistency determination by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I'd like to invite Annie Rosen, environmental scientist within the Energy, Ocean Resources, and Federal Consistency Division, to provide the staff presentation for this item.
Thanks, Cassie. Hello, Commissioners. This item is a consistency determination from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to reissue and modify its nationwide permit program for California coastal areas. The Army Corps reissues this permit program every five years. The proposed program includes 57 new, modified, or reissued nationwide permits. These nationwide permits are preapprovals for the discharge and placement of various types of fill or dredged materials into waters of the United States for a wide range of specified activities identified in the various nationwide permits. Next slide, please. These categories include oil and gas pipelines and structures, mining, outfall and intake structures, expansion or reconfiguration of existing marinas, hydropower projects, cleanup of hazardous and toxic waste, commercial and institutional development, and agricultural activities. If a project falls within the scope of the nationwide permit program, it can, in many cases, proceed without further notice to the Army Corps. A Commission concurrence with this CD would effectively preapprove all authorized nationwide permit activities without providing for any additional review opportunities by the Commission under its federal consistency authority. For the past 32 years, the Commission has objected to the Army Corps' consistency determinations for its nationwide permit program because of the potential for adverse impacts to coastal resources resulting from activities authorized under the program, and because preapproval of broad categories of activities does not ensure consistency with the Coastal Act's policy regulating dredging and the placement of fill within wetlands and coastal waters, Section 302 through 3. Next slide, please. This policy protects wetlands, estuaries, and coastal waters by limiting dredge and fill activities to only certain listed allowable uses. The list of allowable uses in Section 30233 is significantly more limited than the more than 57 broad categories of activities and projects proposed for the Army Corps' nationwide permit program. The Coastal Act's dredge and fill policy also ensures there are no less damaging feasible alternatives to such projects and requires mitigation for unavoidable adverse impacts to coastal resources. Preapproval of projects through concurrence with the nationwide permit program would not provide an opportunity for these important coastal resource protections to be applied. To summarize, the proposed nationwide permit program is inconsistent with the dredge and fill policies in Section 30233 of the Coastal Act in several ways. In many cases, the development activities authorized by these nationwide permits are not among the specific allowable uses identified in Section 30233A. Likewise, approval in advance of any development proposal does not allow the Commission to evaluate whether the proposed development is the least environmentally damaging alternative. Finally, while nationwide permits include a range of resource protection measures, many of them do not include requirements for mitigation of adverse impacts to coastal resources, such as wetlands, estuaries, and sensitive marine habitats. It's important to note that staff's recommendation of objection to the Army Corps' consistency determination for its nationwide permit program will not will not eliminate nationwide permits in the California coastal zone nor add to existing regulatory requirements. Instead, an objection would maintain the current and historic practice successfully used by the commission and the Army Corps over the last 32 years for the nationwide permit program. Next slide, please. Using this approach, most activities qualifying for a nationwide permit can proceed without any significant delays. Applicants with nationwide permits for activities involving dredging and fill activities in the coastal zone or affecting coastal resources would continue to need to receive individual commission authorization, generally through a coastal development permit or concurrence with a consistency certification before the Army Corps permit becomes valid. Waiver of further commission review can also occur for minor projects that would not affect coastal resources. This is a well-established and understood approach for both commission and Army Corps staff, and its continuation through the commission's objection to the current consistency determination would allow the longstanding and successful coordination between these agencies to persist unchanged. In conclusion, the staff recommends that the commission object to the Army Corps' consistency determination. The Army Corps has indicated that they understand our position and do not object to the staff recommendation, and a representative from the Army Corps is here with us today for questions. The ma, excuse me, the motion and resolution are on page four of the staff report. This concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any exparties? Okay, did the representative from the Army Corps wish to make a statement or just available for questions?
They are signed up as available for questions, but I will move them in just in case.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. And if they are just here for questions, we will move to public comment, please.
They declined to be promoted? I think they're okay.
Great, thank you for being here.
We have no other speakers, so.
All right, well, then I will return to the commission for comments, questions, or a motion. Commissioner O'Malley?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
It is. I move the commission concur with consistency determination CD 00725, that the product described there is consistent to the maximum extent practicable with the enforceable policies of the California Coastal Management Program, and asking for a no vote. Second.
That is a motion by Commissioner O'Malley, a second by Commissioner Wilson. They're asking for a no vote. Would either of you like to speak to the motion? I will just say that I appreciate the continued engagement and partnership, and I know we are all working closely and will continue to do so. So my thanks. With that, we will go to a roll call vote, and just a reminder, we're asking for a no vote here.
Commissioner Escalante?
No.
Escalante, no. Commissioner Jackson?
No.
Jackson, no. Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Kelly, no. Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Lopez, no. Commissioner Nadoff?
No.
Nadoff, no. Commissioner Preciado?
No.
Preciado, no. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
No.
Turnbull Sanders, no. Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Wilson, no. Commissioner O'Malley?
No.
O'Malley, no. Chair Harmon?
No.
Harmon, no. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much, and this has been found inconsistent. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to item 10, the Deputy Director's Report for the North Central Coast District.
Yes, thank you. Item number 10 is the North Central Coast District Director's Report, and this month we are reporting one waiver for improvements at the Olympic Club Golf Course in San Francisco. We are not aware of any objections or controversy regarding these matters, and so the question is whether four or more commissioners object, and if not, then the commission will concur.
Excuse me, thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any exparties? Seeing none, is there, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on any of these matters?
There are no speakers.
Okay, thank you. Do three or more commissioners object to any item in the report? Seeing no objection, then the commission concur. Thank you. Now we'll move to 11A, please.
Yes, thank you. 11A is the post-certification map update for Sonoma County, and I'd like to introduce Chris Layden, a research data specialist in the commission's mapping unit, who will give the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harmon and commissioners. Item 11A is a post-LCP certification map update for Sonoma County. The map update replaces older cartographic and hard copy maps with digital maps that show the areas within Sonoma County where the commission retains CDP authority and where that authority has been delegated to the county. The maps also illustrate where county CDP decisions are appealable to the commission for geographic reasons. Next slide, please. The commission first adopted post-certification maps for Sonoma County in 1981, and these updated maps modernized the effort using GIS and other mapping technologies. The maps provide the county and the public with updated digital maps that are more accessible and more accurately reflect conditions on the ground in relation to CDP and appeals jurisdiction boundaries. While today we are talking about Sonoma County, the commission's mapping unit is working on these sorts of updates for LCPs up and down the state, focusing on areas where there have been recent LCP updates, as with Sonoma. Both the current and updated maps are only illustrative, and it is the Coastal Act and its implementing regulations that govern all the jurisdictional boundaries. The updated maps may show more details than before, such as for wetlands, and that is because we have a clearer and more accurate understanding of the location of such features, and they can now be mapped. Again, it is not the maps that define an area as appealable, but rather the resources on the ground that govern jurisdiction. Every effort has been made to be as accurate as possible, and the data can be revised as conditions on the ground change. The updated maps are a technological upgrade from the current maps, all designed to make existing jurisdiction information easier to access and interpret. The purpose of the maps is to use best available data to illustrate jurisdictional areas for planning, transparency, and efficiency. This update is not an LCP amendment, does not establish any new policies or regulations, and most importantly, does not alter the determinations of how jurisdictional boundaries are established by the Coastal Act and its regulations. The county worked with staff on the map updates as a next logical step in the ongoing process of updating their LCP. The land use plan was comprehensively updated and approved by the commission in November of 2024. The county intends to round out and complete the process with an implementation plan update in the near future. Next slide, please. The updated maps are in a five map set, from north to south and numbered 1 through 5, as shown here on slide 3. Slide 3 also shows the map legend for the updated map set. The index and legend can also be seen on exhibit 1 of the staff report, if it's easier to follow from there. Per the legend, the commission's continuing permit jurisdiction is shown in red crosshatch, and the geographic area where county decisions are appealable to the commission is shown in light blue. Each of the different types of lines below that in the legend describe why an area is located in an appeal zone based on proximity to coastal resources, such as 100 feet from streams or 300 feet from the coastal bluff. The appealable area in the county is primarily established in areas where the First Public Road parallels the sea, which is illustrated by a black solid line typically mapped to Highway 1. Next, staff will present each map and note items of particular interest. These maps can also be found on exhibits 2 through 6 of the staff report. Next slide, please. Map 1 starts just south of the Mendocino border at the Wallala River and largely focuses on the Sea Ranch area. Map 1 includes a map note calling out the region potentially affected by the Bane Bill, which is explicitly called out in the Coastal Act and which exempts certain single-family residential developments from certain permitting requirements in the Sea Ranch area. Next slide, please. Map 2 shows the Salt Point area, which is currently only sparsely developed and includes Salt Point State Park. Map 2 also illustrates the many coastal streams in this stretch of coast that establish appeal jurisdiction depicted by the dark blue outlines. Next slide, please. Map 3 shows the Timber Cove and Fort Ross communities south through Russian Gulch. Highway 1 extends atop large bluffs along much of the coastline here. At the bottom of the slide, circled in red, just north of Russian Gulch State Beach, the map illustrates areas where the appeal jurisdiction is based on bluffs and stretches landward of the First Public Road. Highway 1 is very close to the shoreline at this location. Next slide, please. Map 4 shows the Russian River area and the communities of Jenner and Serrano Del Mar. In this stretch, the First Public Road does not primarily dictate the appeals jurisdiction. The appeal boundaries are instead established by the first row of parcels or 300 feet from the mean-high tide line along the Russian River, whichever is the greater distance. Also of note in this area, both the coastal zone and the commission's retained permit jurisdiction stretch relatively far inland and slightly east of the community of Duncan's Mills due to close proximity to the iconic Russian River. Next slide, please. Map 5 shows the region containing the town of Bodega Bay from Carmet south to the Marin County border at Estero Americano. Around Salmon Creek, the First Public Road crosses the inland extent of the mean-high tide line at the area circled in red. Therefore, in this stretch, the commission's retained permit jurisdiction aligns with the boundary of historic tidal areas. There is also a map note for the Bodega Harbor subdivision, which is subject to a 1977 settlement agreement, excluding some development from local permit requirements. Next slide, please. Commission staff received several questions from stakeholders about apparent expansion of appeal jurisdiction, especially related to the appearance of wetlands and streams. Staff coordinated and met with these stakeholders and clarified that these changes reflect improved mapping technology rather than regulatory changes to appeals jurisdiction boundaries. Further, for areas in question, formal specific boundary determinations are available as requested. Next slide, please. In summary, the map update replaces older hard copy maps and allow for greater accuracy, transparency, and ease of use for county and commission planning staff and for the public. Staff recommends that the commission adopt these updated digital post-certification maps for Sonoma County. The motion and resolution to carry out staff's recommendation can be found on page 5 of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we have an expartee to report. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I received an email from Rue Furch regarding this item earlier this week, and it was, the nature of the communication was about some of the sub-areas being put into other specific named sub-areas and what that means for purposes of ongoing jurisdictional challenges.
Are there any other exparties? Okay, do we have a representative from the county who wishes to comment?
Yes, we have Jacob Sedgley from Sonoma County on Zoom.
Morning, commissioners, staff, and members of the public. My name is Jacob Sedgley. I am a senior planner with Permits Sonoma and currently serve as the coastal team lead. Just briefly, I wanted to thank coastal commission staff, especially Esther, Chris, and Luke for their work on this and their collaboration on these maps. Coast commission staff was incredibly responsive, thoughtful, and genuinely incorporated the local jurisdiction comments into these maps to make sure that these would be a good tool for our staff for years to come. So thank you all very much for your work on these. Second, I wanted to underscore how valuable these updated maps are, as well as GIS data for our staff here at Permits Sonoma. As Chris mentioned, currently using some outdated maps to measure where jurisdiction is, which is these big old things. So we are very excited to have online versions available. Having authoritative digital data will streamline our reviews, improve consistency and transparency for the applicants and the public, and reduce overall processing time. So our staff is very excited for these maps. Thank you again to staff and the commission for taking this forward. Otherwise, I'm here to answer, you know, any questions that there are about the local permitting process and how we use these maps. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Chris, are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, well, I will return to the commission and just start by echoing the thanks. Really appreciate, great presentation and clear collaboration here. Are there any of my colleagues who wish to, Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, and I just want to also echo that thank you to staff and county staff for working collaboratively on this. I know there's a number of folks in the Sonoma County community who have been eager to have these digital maps available because of so many questions around jurisdiction and where we retain authority. So really appreciate the work, and certainly long overdue on getting these digitized and available. I did have a couple of questions, so, and maybe this is better directed to county staff, but for properties that you're aware that have been dissected or bisected parcels, or parcels that have, do those exist within this map? And how have we reconciled that? And do you feel like there are challenges that may come before us that will be more complicated because of not reconciling those bisected parcels at this time?
Yeah, so, yeah, obviously there are parcels on there that have different kinds of jurisdictions, given that there are three different types of jurisdictions. I don't necessarily foresee any challenges. That's a, you know, it's a thing on the current maps. Yeah, I can't think of anything else to add to that. Esther or Luke, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I can jump in, thank you, Jacob. So there are two types of commission jurisdiction. There's our retained jurisdiction CDP authority, and there is appeals jurisdiction. When a property is bisected by a retained jurisdiction, generally it would either need a permit from both the local government and the commission or a consolidated permit. In cases where a property is bisected by the appeals jurisdiction, and there is a project on that property, only the portions of the project within the appeals jurisdiction are subject to review in terms of whether or not they're inconsistent with the local government policies. And if it is found to be inconsistent, then the entire project is reviewed de novo under the Coastal Act.
Thank you. And then for some of the sub-areas, there was a question that came up about the Serrano Del Mar community, and I know that this was something that was being discussed with county staff, and I'm curious if it's true, if that area has been split into two separate sub-areas within this mapping process, and if that, what that actually means for purposes of this mapping exercise and challenges that may exist going forward.
I'd be happy to take that question. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I've had a little bit of back and forth with Rue Furch as well about this question, and I think we, I think we sorted it out, but I'll just briefly clarify some of the background here. The question about the sub-areas is specifically relating to the 100 or so maps and figures that are basically an appendix to the county's comprehensive, excuse me, the county's comprehensive LCP update that they did for the land use plan about one year ago. And so those sub-area designations were approved by the county in 2023 and then approved by the commission in November 2024. And so that's not actually what is before the commission today. That's something that if the county wished to revisit at some point in the future and divide the sub-areas differently, that would be an option. I think there was a little bit of confusion in terms of the way the maps are portrayed, because as Chris showed in the presentation, we have five different maps. Of course, it's just one county, but it's so, the, you know, Sonoma's coastline is 60 miles. It's so big that we had to arbitrarily kind of just decide where to put the line in terms of like, here's map one, here's map two. But in terms of the way that is divided up on what's before the commission today, it has no impact over the sub-areas or any other local jurisdictional question. So that's not really what's before the commission today, and I'd be happy to pass it to Jacob Sedgley with the county if there's any other additional context around the nine sub-areas or that particular area.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, these are jurisdiction maps, so they're separate from, you know, any of the sub-areas that are mapped out in the LCP or any of the policies within the LCP. So they're just meant for jurisdiction only.
Thank you, and that was my understanding as well. I guess my question is, is if there's residents in the community who have continued to raise challenges regarding how those sub-areas were created and that it's in the county's jurisdiction to reconcile those, should the county be interested? What is the appropriate? should the county be interested? What is the appropriate avenue for those residents to feel heard? And is there any interest on the part of the county to try to fix some of those things that seemingly don't sit well with the community after that mapping effort was concluded in 2024?
Yeah, I mean, there's still a lot of work to be done on this. All of our updates were for the local coastal plan. We still have upcoming implementation and updates to our local, or sorry, zoning code, coastal zoning code, as well as the administrative manual. So we're definitely open to, you know, discussing any further changes or fixes that need to be done to the LCP as part of implementation later on.
Great, I really appreciate it. I know that, you know, this is, we're continuing to push this boulder up a hill, but I think just hearing the frustration in the community, and obviously, there's gratitude along with that of the work that's been done thus far, but really wanting to get those changes and that feedback memorialized in some way. I think it's going to continue to bubble up in these other unrelated but related exercises that we're doing. So it'd be wonderful to try to get collaboration with the county and those residents so that they feel like their participation in this process is being memorialized as we continue to move forward with all of those components yet to come. So thank you for your willingness to collaborate and do that work. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions, or a motion? It's on page five, if anyone's.
I got it.
Commissioner Jackson?
I move that the commission approve map adoption number MA-2025-001 pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second. That's a motion by Commissioner Jackson, a second by Commissioner Kelly. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Preciado?
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Chair Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, I think in the interest of time, we're going to just keep moving right along. If anyone needs a bio break, I think we have quorum, so just be aware of who leaves when, please. So that will bring us to item 12, the deputy director's report for the Central Coast District.
Yes, thank you. In the Central Coast District Director's Report this month, we are reporting one coastal permit amendment, three permit extensions, and one emergency coastal permit. We are not aware of any objection or controversy regarding these matters, and so the question is whether three or more commissioners object, and if not, then the commission will concur.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any expertes? No? Any speakers signed up to speak on this?
No, just one available for questions.
Great, thank you. Do three or more commissioners object to the deputy director's report? Seeing no objections, the commission concurs. We will move on to item 14A, please.
That's right. Item 14A is an appeal of a mixed use project in Cayucos in San Luis Obispo County, and I'd like to introduce Sarah McGregor, a coastal planner in the commission's Central Coast District Office, who will give the presentation on Zoom.
Thank you, and good morning Commissioners. And we have a presentation for this. Thank you. Item 14A is an appeal of a San Luis Obispo County coastal development permit to construct a new roughly 4,200 square foot mixed use building consisting of two motel units on the ground floor and one residential unit on the second floor on an undeveloped lot. Slide one shows a rendering of the proposed project. Next slide, please. The project is located in the unincorporated community of Cayucos in San Luis Obispo County. The site is noted here in the middle of slide two. Next slide, please. And slide three zooms in on the site and surrounding area with the site noted in the red rectangle. The project is located on an approximately 7,500 square foot vacant lot. The site is designated as commercial retail, has frontage on South Ocean Avenue, and is one block inland from Cayucos State Beach. Next slide, please. The appeal primarily contends that the county approved project raises LCP consistency questions related to parking requirements and standards, including that the project does not provide adequate parking for the proposed uses. However, the project provides seven standard sized parking spaces numbered here in red, including one ADA parking space and one EV charging space, which means the LCP requirement for parking for the proposed uses. And the parking lot design does not raise a substantial issue of LCP conformance. The appellants also contend that the project raises stormwater and drainage issues. However, the county approval requires submission of drainage plans and a stormwater control plan for review and approval by County Public Works, and thus, this does not raise a substantial issue. Furthermore, the appellants contend that conditions related to prior approvals at the site are applicable to the approved development. While there was a CDP approved in 2000 for a hotel development at this site and the two sites to the north, the hotel was never constructed and the CDP has since expired. All in all, the appeal contentions do not raise a substantial issue. Next slide, please. As a result, staff recommends that the commission determine that the appeal contentions do not raise a substantial issue, and that the commission declined to take jurisdiction over the CDP application for this project. The single motion necessary to implement this recommendation is found on page four of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any expertes? Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I participated Wednesday morning at the Zoom discussion regarding this project with Dan Borodori, Anne Sturgis, Harley Dubois, John Carsell, and Vicky Tomash, and they expressed their concerns specifically regarding the parking design of this proposed project. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Also on 9/8, I met with Dante Borodori, Vicky Tomash, John Carsell, and Anne Sturgis on this same project with concerns based on primarily the parking, but also on the characteristics of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other expertes, we will open the public hearing and go first to the appellant.
I am not seeing the applicant's, or the appellant's representative, Dan Borodori, but we do have on Zoom Anne Sturgis and Harley Dubois. So I'm moving Anne Sturgis in right now, and then Harley will follow. Anne Sturgis, go ahead when you're able to.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, good morning. My name is Anne Sturgis, and I live in Cayucos. For 13 years, I love the small town of atmosphere. I am opposed to the project San Luis County approved it even though it violates its own statute. Coastal Land Use Ordinance 23.05.104 requires a turnout halfway down the driveway of the 160-foot across the Donaldson property and the two adjoining properties. The driveway has not been built on the Donaldson property nor the adjoining unimproved property. Look at the picture of the three properties attached to Commissioner Lopez's ex parte report, and you will see the need for a turnout. Your staff report addresses this issue as a polite request when it is actually a governmental mandate. The commission staff say that the adjacent property owner might agree to turnout as the county requires, but the staff report indicates that it is not necessary for the developer to adhere to the law. There is no way to build in a turnout after the driveway is constructed. It has to be required now before beginning to build this development. Cayucos is a small town, and if you approve the variance for this developer, it will be the beginning of the end for us. We can't afford to set the precedent. We don't have enough housing, and every vacation home that goes up takes another opportunity for people who work in Cayucos to find a place to live here. We want to keep our parking spots for tourists coming from inland. The development will make a bad parking problem worse. I believe it is a substantial issue and that the county's caller is... Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on to Harley, I wanted to ask both Anne Sturgis and Harley if Dan Borodori or Vicky Tomash are with you, sharing a device? I'm still not seeing them on Zoom.
Yes, they are available. I'll go to Vicky right now.
Okay, we can go to Vicky then, if you're sharing your device.
Well, I'm not sharing device yet, but I'm going to do that right now.
Okay.
So go to...
Yeah, okay, well, we'll move to Harley.
Hi, thank you all. I'm Harley Dubois, and I'm directly behind the Donaldson property. And I really want to talk about a larger picture, where this is leading us down the road. And I do think if you looked at the largest picture, you'll see a substantial issue. The supervisors of Slow continue to not use the tools that they have, that have already been established, as Anne spoke about, Ordinance 23.05.014D. We discovered after, just recently, and so that's why it isn't in all of your paperwork from us already. But it does say that a turnout is necessary, and it's for safety. We can't get an ambulance in there or a fire truck in there if there's an issue without the turnout. So that is our main concern at this point. Other businesses in Cayucos have all had to make adequate parking. So it's, I don't know why we're changing the rules for new developments. I personally love the idea of putting vacation rentals and mixed use into the business districts. I think it's a great solution, but we have to let, we'd have to provide the parking. Otherwise, our streets are very narrow, and they get jammed up. We're going to have parking parking lot jams or parking in the street jams, and it's going to change the way our town is. If you take the bigger picture, if we continue on this path, we're going to only have more richer people coming to our town. We're known on the coast for a really good place for the inland people to come. It's going to change our restaurants. It's going to change our, the way our, like, even having a bank, we don't even have a bank in town now. It's going to become like Santa Barbara or these other places. We want to preserve our community and what we're known for, our culture here. As a small town, it's very important to us.
Thank you. And then back to Vicky Tomash, if they're with you. Anne Sturgis?
Yes, I'm here using Anne's device.
Okay.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you good.
Thank you. We own the property directly behind the Donaldson development, and I oppose this project for three reasons. First, there is a 160-foot driveway, which is the only entrance to the little parking lot. The driveway crosses two other properties, but there is no way to access the Donaldson lot except to risk the long drive down. And then when the driver sees that there is nowhere to park, they put the car in reverse and try to navigate this very narrow driveway out to the street. Your staff report admits that the county requires that a turnaround be provided, but they inexplicably refer to it as though the requirement may be ignored. Please note this vague language from page nine of the staff report. It seems likely that a driveway turnout could be provided along the access easement. And yet, based on this nebulous statement, the staff report concludes that no substantial issue exists. My second concern is the size of the parking lot, as my colleague Harley just mentioned. And my third concern is the one that will do the most harm to our town in the future. If these variances are approved, it will set a devastating precedent on the central coast. These are not towns with public transportation or rideshare services. These are towns where families come to cool off on a summer day expecting to find street parking. By allowing the Donaldson development to provide only a fraction of the parking spaces they need and no turnaround space, the coastal commission will set a precedent in Cayucos that will damage the ability of our businesses to thrive. They all provided sufficient parking, but now a new business comes in that will take away spaces meant for the public, not for the developers' enrichment. Please, before you decide whether a substantial issue exists, consider the effects of this decision on our town. And I'd like to mention that I know that Dan Borodori is on this call. He submitted a speaker card and also six slides in advance. And I'm not sure why you couldn't see me or him, and both of us submitted speaker requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we do have both of their speaker requests, but we do not see them in the Zoom meeting. Is it possible that they might be watching on Calspan? We do not see Dan Borodori, and that would be the last remaining appellant speaker.
It is possible, and I don't know how to rectify that. I myself didn't know that there was more than one way to join the Zoom call, so I don't know how to rectify that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Excuse me. So we'll move on. Is there a representative from the applicant?
Yes, we have two people with the applicants, Adriana Cook and Rebecca Newman, and they're both on Zoom. They indicated they're available for questions, but I see Adriana with her hand up.
Ms. Cook, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, so, based on these appeals, we are not asking for any variance. We have the required amount of parking stalls that we were asked to have. They're all full size. I think there is some confusion with the turnaround versus turnout. We have approval by fire, so we're not, our goal as architects is fire and life safety and to make sure the well-being of the public is good. That's our job. And so that is definitely a factor for us, and we did not design this without thinking that. The turnout is required by the county, and we do meet it. It asks for a specific width in the drive aisle, which we exceed. And so we meet all the requirements, and we're not asking for a variance on any of them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cook. We're just going to hold on one moment, because I think we may get some folks back.
Yes, we just sent them an initial Zoom link, and they should be joining shortly.
Thank you. While we wait, Chris, is there a local government representative who wishes to speak?
I don't believe so. We just had one member of the public. That was John Carsell, who is on Zoom.
Okay. Let's please go ahead with Mr. Carsell.
Okay, John Carsell, you're moving in right now. When you're able to, please unmute and go ahead. All right. John Carsell?
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners and staff. I am mostly concerned with a couple of things. Let me go back for a second. As you saw with Cayucos, we're not next to any other major metropolitan area. The biggest town around us is Morro Bay. We don't have major public transportation. We don't have a train hub or buses or Ubers or things like that coming to town. When people come here for day trips, they drive. They drive cars, and those cars come from all kinds of places, from North County of San Luis Obispo, from Fresno, for Bakersfield. These are people coming to enjoy the coast. If you have insufficient or unusable parking in sites that are being built, then you're forcing those people to go into the public parking, and our approximately 90 or 100 public parking spaces start to be taken up by these people, and it's real discrimination against the day trippers. People who build hotels should have enough onsite parking to manage the hotels. The precedential value of this type of hotel, however, is wonderful. I mean, I'm all in favor of putting vacation rentals in the commercial zone, but it needs to be done right. The requirement under the statute for a turnaround, not turnabout, but just a turnabout, I'm sorry, space to get off of the easement and allow vehicles to get by you... space to get off of the easement and allow vehicles to get by you, that space is mandated by county statute. I don't understand the ignoring by everybody on this commission, it seems, of the fact that there is a statute that says there will be this turnabout in a driveway of this length. Your staff report says, acknowledges it's there and just says, okay, it's just a hope that because coastal access has to be required on both sides, that it's going to be fixed and the turnaround will have to be made. However, there's no condition for it. How do you approve something that forces people to back out of a 160-foot driveway? I don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have Dan Borodori on Zoom now. And then I see you're still muted. I've asked you to unmute. You should see the thing on your screen.
Okay, now we got it.
There you go.
Okay. The Donaldson parking lot was approved by the San Luis County Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. And next slide, please. Following the regulations written, but did leave a few regulations out. There's seven parking places, or for two guest rooms, one for a residence, one for ADA, and one for EV charging. There's no parking for the employees. Spaces are 10 feet wide, 18 feet long. The 22-foot drive aisleway in the center. This allowed the developer also to reduce the setback from the neighbor's property line to 2 feet 8 inches from 5 feet. In doing so, they didn't put stop blocks to stop vehicles from pulling into the buffer zone on the property line. They didn't require a turnaround at the end of the lot and a turnaround midway in the driveway, even though it is in the county regulations. Next slide, please. Sorry for the orientation. According to the California New Car Dealers Association, second quarter 2025, 73.6% of the vehicles sold in California and 82.4% in the United States are light-duty trucks. The new light-duty truck, or the number-one light-duty truck, is the Ford F-Series with the most popular configuration, the crew cab. Some of these trucks can be as long as 22 feet 2 and 1/2 inches with a trailer hitch 23 feet plus. Next slide, please. That would mean that 5 and 1/2 feet would be parked in the aisle. If you had two of these parked across from each other, it could reduce the 22-foot aisle to 11 feet. Next slide, please. I use their parking lot drawing and put vehicles in randomly. Per the statistics, as you can see, you may drive to the end of the motel parking and find no parking. You would now be 161 feet from the street, having to back out because of no turnaround or turnout. A turnout will not provide enough space to turn around. Next slide. As you see, this is slightly exaggerated, but this is what it would look like if you were at the end of the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any other speakers.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will close the public hearing and return to our staff for any closing comments.
Yes, I believe our district manager, Kevin Kahn, is on the Zoom.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Just real quickly on this one, just a couple of quick observations. So first, this is a pretty small project. It's three units, two of which are a standard operating hotel, and then one residential unit that's envisioned to serve as the manager's unit. Excuse me. It also meets all LCP requirements with respect to parking, provides seven parking spaces, and it does not eliminate any of the existing on-street spaces because it uses that existing shared driveway. And then lastly, with respect to the turnaround, that's been discussed today. As we say in the staff report, yes, technically, that's something that should have been addressed kind of more explicitly on the county's plans as part of its local approval. But it was, it is conditioned in the county's approval for, to work with the fire department and with the adjacent property owners to, as prior to any building permit issuance, to address any residual parking issues. So we think the issue was adequately addressed, and I think largely for this commission. This is a pretty site-specific issue about parking maneuverability and not necessarily on coastal resource issues that it's been adequately addressed up through and including by the Board of Supervisors. With that, we're available for any questions, or if Sarah, if you have anything else you would like to provide here.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kahn. So I will return to the commission for comments, questions, or a motion. Commissioner Wilson.
I'm happy to make a motion, but before I do, I want to note that this was approved by the Board of Supervisors on July 8th of this year, brought an appeal in, looks like less than 60 days, for $0 to the, to the applicant and to the county to have a substantial review and of the coastal act and adjudication of that, which then again is, relieves them of some liability. And I would point out what a service that is, that we provide for those, for those jurisdictions and those applicants. So here we go. I'm going to do the motion. I move that the commission determine that appeal number A-3-SLO-25-0027 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603. I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
And I'd like to just add that this, you know, it is, this is, this, this property is vacant. So, you know, there is, there is at least a presumed entitlement for development in the mixed use, and it provides one residential unit and two hotel units, which then, in my mind, relieves pressure on the short-term rental markets and then in the, in terms of the, you know, in that perspective. So I think it's good for housing at those levels. And I think it's good for, if you want people in your restaurants and you want people to maintain a sustainable economy in these small towns, especially tourism towns, you need, you need to provide the space for people to stay. So I'm happy to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Wilson, a second by Commissioner Nadoff. They're asking for a yes vote. If we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Lopez, yes. Commissioner Nadoff.
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Preciado.
Aye.
Preciado, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Jackson, yes. Chair Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you. No substantial issue has been found. I think this brings us to our last item for the day, item 15A. No.
Item 15A has been postponed.
Okay.
That's the end.
Then that is the end. Amazing. Well, I will close first by thanking our staff for their excellent work. The city of Fort Bragg, we always love to be here. It was just a really fabulous week and so much to love about being in this town. And our team at AGP, you guys are the best. Thank you for keeping us online and available and in line as well. And so thank you, everyone. We'll see you next month at Redondo Beach. We're adjourned.